Good evening. We hereby call the meeting of, Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 to order. First on the agenda is roll call. And for this particular meeting, all Planning Commission members are here and present. And the agenda and notes have been posted to the city's website. If you're watching live streaming, you'll see Member Rudd's seat is empty, but he's here on the telephone with us. With that, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone would just stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This brings us to our initial public comment portion of the agenda. Comments during this portion of the agenda must be related to matters on the agenda for action. Anyone wishing to be heard has up to five minutes to speak. And I'll just ask, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything on the agenda this So what we'll do is we'll open the phone lines. If anyone is streaming this and wishes to comment on an agenda item, the number to call in right now is (702) 589-9629. And there's a bit of a delay, so we'll give 45 seconds for comments to be received. any comments mailed or emailed into the city before this meeting?
Chairman, not for this public comment.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll start with the first item on the agenda for possible action is approval of the minutes of the March 16th, 2022 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no discussion, I'll move approval of the March 16th minutes.
Any comment? The correct. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. Second item on the agenda is CU-22-271 with resolution number 1209. Applicant Allison Schaefer, 1656 Boulder City Parkway, and it's a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit in the commercial manufacturing zone to allow the boarding of dogs pursuant to Section 11134 of the city code.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant previously received approval of a different conditional use permit last year for a location on Wells Road, but that location fell through before she could move in. So now she would like to operate her proposed pet daycare and overnight boarding facility for dogs at 1656 Boulder City Parkway, which is within the Boulder Dam Plaza Shopping Center. The code lists canine and/or feline boarding places and kennels as a conditional use in this zone with the condition that all exercise areas shall be on site. And so she's provided a written description of the request as well as a floor, floor plan of the building, and there are also additional photos attached. For the purposes of the exercise areas being on site, the proposed location is a suite within the main shopping center building, and all of the suites and buildings in this plaza are on one single property. The applicant's information indicates there will be play area indoors as well as a 10-foot deep area to the rear of the subject suite that will be used for an outdoor play area that she intends to fence in and improve. And then the rest of the staff report goes over information related to the criteria to be considered for a conditional use. And there is a resolution attached should the Planning Commission wish to approve this request, and it has the same conditions as the request did previously. And on page 13 of the packet are suggested alternate motions the commission could use to either approve or deny the request.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for, for Susan?
Yes, Susan, I have one question. I didn't notice, if I missed it, I'm sorry, but is there a limit in the, as to the, how many animals can be kept on the facility at any given time?
Not per the zoning code. The only limit on animals in the zoning ordinance is for single-family residences and single-family dwellings. Commercial facilities would be subject to any enforcement action through our animal control office, so if there were any complaints, you know, about problems there in terms of, you know, excessive noise or odors, and that might be a result perhaps then of too, quote unquote, too many animals. But I wouldn't know if, what, if there are stand quantities that the animal control office has to deal with, or if there's even a county or state agency that is subject to.
Related question, then, is that a, as part of our deliberations or recommendations, could a limit be set, or is that not really reasonable?
No, that, that could be reasonable, but I would suggest the commission discuss that with the applicant, and, you know, you may be satisfied with whatever she's proposing.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a question for the applicant.
Oh, well, wait, we're not quite there yet. For a second. Anyone else have questions for city staff, I should say? Were there any comments received by the city regarding this matter?
Chairman, there were no comments.
Thank you. Would the applicant please stand and state your name, and it sounds like we have some questions for you.
Yep. My name is Allison Schaefer. And in regards to the first question, no, do I?
No, yes, please go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. So in regards to our first question about how many animals, my job is to make sure that the animals are playing safely. So for our business, we will not allow more than 15 dogs per employee. So we're going to be averaging about 25 to 30, no more than that, because then at that point, the dogs are well overstimulated, there's no way for me to gain control of the pack. And so it's much more important for them to feel comfortable and actually have a good experience at the daycare. So we would not be going over 30 in this certain facility.
I guess a question related to that, then, when I looked at the plan and the, I guess I, what looked like the number of individual kennel spaces, it did not look like you had very many. How, how would you regulate, so to speak, out of that 30? Is it going to be limited to the number of pens you have for an individual dog?
So this is considered open play. The only reason that we have that kennel area is for the overnight boarding. We've created more of a suite, more of a boutique feel, something that can be a bit closer to home for the dogs, so we have different sizes. The dogs at, that are there for playtime, whoever's boarding, we will be taking that into consideration. If the animal is going to be playing during the day, that would be one less that I could bring in for the rest of the daycare. During calm and quiet time, because every day there needs to be a time where the pups calm down, settle down, everybody takes nap, you know, at that time we would do lunches, some puppies still need their lunch, some of the senior dogs have to have medication midday, so we would make sure that there's a point where I can do a full cleaning of the place, and the dogs just kind of hang out and settle down. That's part of that open pack feel. My job is to make sure that these dogs understand, a basic understanding of sit, stay quiet, you know, and that's, that's just part of working with these animals.
So it sounds like the primary way you handle that is by assessing each dog as to their ability to get along with the other dogs, and that's pretty much the way. And if you didn't have that, then I assume you would not take them?
Unfortunately, not. The dogs do have to be well-integrated, or at least be able to be integrated into our pack. And it's not for everybody. You know, I, you and I might not hang out on a daily, you know, but this is cool, you know? That's the point, is you want to find, you want to find dogs that emotionally match. Otherwise, this is going to be a really bad experience for your animal, and I'm sorry, I won't run a business like that.
Okay. Thank you very much. That sounds good. Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
Question here. So it sounds like, from that response, that you would see the primary business would, would be daycare, not so much the overnight boarding.
Not as, yeah, I mean, but with doing daycare, overnight boarding happens, you know, the owners, they understand that, you know, adding another person into that dog's life, it can be stressful sometimes, depending on the dog, but as long, and it's stressful for any dog to leave, leave their owners. So if someone was leaving, it's already stressful enough. So our job is to really make sure that that pup has the best experience possible. It's going to be different than home, but we try to make it as close to home as possible. And that's why I want to keep it kind of on the smaller side, because I, I'm not going to have all these little bitty kennels. I want full runs, I want them to be able to be comfortable in the space.
Very good.
So we may have to limit the boarding, but it's, it's for quality control, I feel.
So when you were here last, you had somewhat, the property that you'd selected, and I'm sorry that that didn't work for you. It looked like a really good situation. That property was more industrial, if you will, than this one. And so the idea of cleaning the floors and all that sort of thing seemed pretty straightforward, pretty easy, which brings me to the question of, this is more of a, I guess I would say it was designed more as an almost office space or retail kind of space. You've obviously looked at the facility. Does it look as though you'll be able to clean it effectively, for instance, floor drains, what, what have you?
For now, we don't have any floor drains, so we are absolutely going to make that work with what we have, meaning we'll probably get a wet-to-dry shop vac, and we'll have squeegees. I will be having the floor painted and textured, and I made sure that the texture is not gripping, so it's, it's enough texture for the dogs to not slip all over the place, but it's also not going to hang on to any smells. I ran a veterinary clinic for four years, and I have a real hard time with smells, so if I can run a veterinary clinic that never smells like a dog or a cat, I'm pretty sure I can keep this under control.
All right. And it sounds like, I have to ask the question, being that this was more retail space, and I don't know how the building was constructed, but would you feel you'll be able to adequately prevent, let's just say, seepage of liquid waste into, like, under a framed wall into the next space, or is the space is separated adequately?
It's, it's separated by concrete walls. And then we also have rubber, not floorboards, but the little...
Faceboards.
Faceboards, thank you.
Ah, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I, I do feel very comfortable with saying that, because the other thing is, I, I personally would not want to be in a dirty room, and I know quite a few dogs that are quite the same way. And so as soon as it gets done, the whole point of having a handler in there regularly is so we can have somebody cleaning as it's happening. So it shouldn't be seeping anywhere.
Good point. Very good. Thank you, that's all I have. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have one more.
All right.
Given the nature of dogs, and especially mine, but when you drop them off, they always have a tendency to get all excited and sometimes relieve themselves, is your plan to, as best you can, police it?
So part of my job, and what the daycare should be doing, is if you were to go into a daycare, a child, a children's daycare, a child is not going to be, they're going to have rules, maybe different rules than at home, they learn those rules. The dogs are very similar, so obviously the first couple of times, absolutely, they may make a mess up there, but there's also going to be textured area there, we can clean that up. The way that the entrance is set up, there's holding pens in different places to let the dogs adjust, and not just the dog that's coming in, but also the dogs that are already there. They need to be able to adjust and calm down before you bring them in. Otherwise, you're asking for a fight with dogs that love each other, and they like, they like playing with each other. So part of our job is to make sure that that dog understands, okay, this is positive, but you have to do this first, so follow my rules, and then we can go play. But there will be a small holding pen just inside the front door, and then there will be a space that the dog can come in, owner can check in, and then we'll have another holding pen between where the dog is going to be hanging out, we're going to put the leash and the collar and everything there, and then once the other dogs have kind of settled down, we can let the new dog in.
That sounds very good. My specific question, no concerns outside before they enter in the building?
Oh, I see. Well, my thought on that is if we see it again, we really need to take care of that first, so that would just be another one of those not leaving it.
Can I add to this?
Oh, yes.
Hello, my name is Adam Schaefer, Allison's husband, co-owner of the business. We're also going to be using specific cleaning products that are NSF and Kosher certified, so they're safe for human and animal to be around. So they actually have active enzymes in them as well to help to completely kill and eradicate the bacteria. We'll be able to use that inside and outside. So if an animal does have an accident on their way in, we'll be able to spot treat it. It's a standard concrete walkway out there, it's not like a modern business building where you might have tiles or grout, things like that. It is all concrete, so it'll be very easy to maintain. And inside, as Allison pointed out, we will seal the concrete, so that'll make sure it's very easy to keep clean.
And just, that sounds very good. Probably part of my question is, there's no, like, a lot of shopping centers of that nature sometimes have a little bit of a green area, rock area, whatever, which most people are pretty good about at least taking their dog there, not necessarily cleaning up after them, but they still do that. Where you do have concrete, it just does seem to me present a little bit more of an issue. So I'm glad to hear you're going to, at some level, police it.
Well, they have, they will have plenty of space to run around and play, we'll have turf in the back and all of that, and like I said, we just have to get to know our dogs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounds like a pretty neat business model. So let's bring this back to the, well, I guess right now is the time to hold a public hearing, and I'm assuming that no one else in the audience, that the applicant's not going to have a comment on their own application, so we'll turn it to anyone who may be watching this. Once again, the number to call in at this time is (702) 589-9629, and we'll give another, Hearing no comments, we'll bring this back to the Planning Commission for deliberation and a motion. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make or have a motion? No comments? Would anyone like to offer up a motion?
I, I move to approve resolution number 1209, which includes findings and conditions for approval of CU-22-271.
I'd second that motion. Any further comment? Let's bring this to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Congratulations. All right. That brings us to the next item, number three, and this is a, this is AM 223-357, resolution 1210, City of Boulder City, a public hearing and recommendation to the city council on a proposed amendment to Section 1125-6 of the city code regarding landscaping for multifamily uses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A rather simple zoning amendment is proposed to address an immediate need to modify the landscape requirements for multifamily developments. The change allows for an alternate standard to use landscaping which provides living plant coverage at maturity over at least 50% of the ground area. This standard matches the requirement of the rebate program offered through the Southern Nevada Water Authority to remove grass. More substantial amendments to the landscape chapter will occur at a later date, and the rest of the staff report just goes into more detail about that, but the commission will already be familiar with a couple of variances that have been granted for multifamily communities going through this process. And before the Southern Nevada Water Authority was aware that we had landscape code requirements, they have probably approved several other conversions for communities, that those projects also would not, would not comply with our burial code right now, which is a pretty onerous point requirement that favors grass. So since it will take a bit more time to overhaul the entire landscape chapter, a quick solution to this current problem, especially given, especially given some recent changes in state law, is to allow, in lieu of meeting our point system requirements for multifamily communities, that if they can show they're basically meeting the same standard as required by the SNWA, because it does require landscaping, that that will also be acceptable for the city. So again, the SNWA's program doesn't let people just remove grass and replace it with all rock, they do have to have either existing or new plant coverage that at maturity will provide coverage over at least 50% of the ground area. So the city is proposing a text amendment that would also allow that, and therefore then these communities wouldn't have to come to the Planning Commission for a variance first before participating in the SNWA program.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Susan? Mr. Beasley?
Susan, one question I did have, I, this is great, I mean, one, but I was wondering about why it's just addressing multifamilies, or is it the, is there any reason why we wouldn't also consider applying it to R1s?
We don't have landscape standards for the R1 zones, there's no requirement.
Okay. But theoretically, that could be done, but it would just require council to do that?
No, people, single-family, you know, communities can just go ahead and change landscaping as they choose.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And so if I, so I think you were pretty clear on this, but just to make sure we all understand, this really brings our code, or I should say, it allows the flexibility for multifamily developments within the town of Boulder City to adjust their landscaping, really to meet the future requirements imposed by the state recently, but also allows multifamily users to take advantage of the rebate programs currently offered by SNWA.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments mailed or emailed into the city regarding this item? All right. Any other questions for city staff on this?
Yeah, one question. Susan, the only thing that's altered then is that section two in the language?
Yes, on page 29, well, it's all of, it's for item 6A, the title of that, then one sentence deleted in subparagraph one, and then the changed language in subparagraph two.
Any other questions for city staff? And given that we've heard from the applicant already, we'll open it up for public comment. I believe this is a public hearing, yes. We'll open the public hearing. Again, if you're watching this or streaming this, please call now to the, and if you have comments, please call now to the (702) 589-9629, and we'll give a minute for the Hearing no comments, let's bring this back to the Planning Commission for deliberation and a motion. Does anyone have any comments regarding this, this item? Seeing no comments, I'd make a motion to approve resolution 1210, which includes findings for a recommendation to city council in favor of AM 22-357.
I'm sorry, could you...
Go ahead, one of you second. We got Nate as seconding, very good.
No, oh, who made the motion? Okay, I'm sorry, thank you, I apologize.
It's all right. All right, any comments to the motion as written by city staff, or I'm sorry, to the, uh, resolution as written, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The recommendation passes as written. Thank you very much for, for moving this forward to us. Brings us to item number four, month in progress report on development allotments.
Normally I just say no comment, but I thought I would just note that over at Boulder Hills Estates, um, they have now, all permits have now been issued for all of the lots, so at this point, it will just be cruising over the next few months for completion of that subdivision.
Very good. Anyone have questions on that? Nope, that brings us to the last item, which is the general public comment. Um, if anyone wishes to provide a comment, uh, this is the time, and each person would have five minutes to speak. Comments, uh, made during this period of the agenda may be on any subject. If you have comments and you're streaming the meeting, please call right now to number 702-589-9629, and we'll hold for a minute. Hearing no comments, we'll close the public comment portion of the agenda and bring the meeting, the planning commission meeting of Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, to a close. Thank you, one and all.